Evening. It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna open the regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, Trusting Mary Harp.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Becca Chambliss?
Here.
Carlos Harp?
Here.
Mary Harp?
Here.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Mark Kimball?
Here.
Kristara McAlpine Taylor?
She's absent with notice.
Aria Thompson?
Here.
Public input is a vital part of how Madison District Public Schools operate. Station values hearing from parents, staff, as these perspectives help the district toward achieving its mission. Public comment is set aside at every Board of Education meeting. Allows parents and community members to share their thoughts, ideas, and concerns about school-related topics directly with the board. Anyone wishing to speak must complete a request form and submit it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Each speaker is allotted three minutes. Comments that follow these guidelines are accepted and considered by the board. Public comment is more than a formality. It is one of the ways the board gathers input to make decisions in the best interest of the students. Community voices help shape policy programs and priorities that support student success. While board members cannot respond to comments or engage in dialogue during meetings, concerns may be referred to the board for follow-up. The board also works with the district staff to ensure that the questions and suggestions are addressed.
Collaboration between the board and the public strengthens our ability to fulfill our mission to provide a rigorous curriculum that engages every student, regardless of their current academic level, in a safe, supportive, and nurturing environment for all students.
Have any requests? Done. We will move on to the Superintendent Perry with the presentation.
Um, we are going to start. So we start our board meetings once a month by having presentation and we honor our student of the month and staff members of the month. But we're gonna start a little differently today. It is National Principal Appreciation Month and we wanna take this time to first honor our principals and say thank you for all that you do. So, to all of our principals, leading a school ordinary work done by extraordinary people.
With heartfelt gratitude, Madison District Public Schools proudly recognizes and celebrates your dedication, vision, and unwavering commitment to excellence.
Your leadership inspires staff, motivates students, and strengthens our entire school community.
Thank you for your countless hours you devote to guiding, supporting, and uplifting those around you.
Your courage, compassion, and consistency making a lasting impact each day and every day. Thank you for all that you do. And we just have a little token of appreciation for our building principals and assistant principals.
Do one big round of applause when they all get together.
Lisa. Okay, now we are going to move on to Student and Staff of the Month. So we'll just have each school come up and present their awards to the students and the staff.
Everyone, um, we are going to honor two of our students from Ms. Newman's class. So she's bringing them up right now.
Yeah. Ahem. Hello. So I'm Ms. Newman. Um, these are two of my students, Brayden Itoni and James Brahman. So they are my October, hello, Students of the Month. Um, Brayden is a leader in my classroom. He loves to welcome new friends and often he's the one saying, you know, they're not following their routine. Um, he's a lot of fun. He's made huge progress in the last year. Um, and I'm excited to see what else he's gonna do. And we have James. James is in my afternoon class. He's another very welcoming student. Um, when he first started, he was very shy and now you can hear him on the playground yelling, "We're friends!" So, um, he's also a leader in our afternoon program. He's very eager to learn. He enjoys being in school. And in fact, last year, these two were best buddies. So, they are doing very well and I'm very proud to have them in my room.
The Month, Pam Bersholi. One down. Pam has been a valued member of our Learning Tree program for the past three years. She is a loyal and dedicated employee who consistently demonstrates reliability and a strong work ethic. Pam is always willing to step up and help whenever additional support is needed. Her positive attitude and caring nature have helped build our wonderful, um, her build a wonderful relationship with the students in our Learning Tree program. Learning Tree, by the way, is our before and after-school program and they truly enjoy working with you. Um, Michelle appreciates all of your help when you're in the office and a couple other staff members. She is knowledgeable and is so good at taking care of the children and Ms. Pam is a hard and dedicated worker. So we wanna congratulate you and thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have Madison Elementary School.
Good evening. This month, we are honoring our fifth graders. I have two of my fifth grade teachers here, um, to talk about their selections. Come on up.
All right. I feel very blessed and very honored to present Natalie with this special award. Natalie has been selected as the recipient of the Heart of Madison October Student of the Month. Ever since joining MES, her love of learning has been evident. Natalie is the type of student that has such an inquisitive mind. She is not afraid to ask questions to help further her understanding. Her love of learning goes above and beyond. Unfortunately, she is being faced with some big challenges this year, but Natalie hasn't stopped facing each one with such courage and perseverance. She is also the type of person that is so grateful for others. She recognizes the love and care she receives and makes sure to forward it back onto others. The world is going to be a much better place because she's leading the future. We love you, Natalie, and can't wait to see what's in store for you.
Hello. Um, my name's Erin Hopkins. Um, I'm a fellow fifth grade teacher and I'm here to honor Mr. Jamir Rousher Lawrence. Um, since the beginning of his first day in fifth grade, Jamir has demonstrated his deep, almost instinctual commitment to guiding others and helping them grow. Whenever someone in class needs his help, needs materials, or needs some words of support to get through the day, Jamir is always looking out for others. He is a leader in the classroom and his insightful and perceptive personality helps him to see problems before they start, which helps him remind students of class expectations before they get in trouble. He has demonstrated integrity beyond his years multiple times in the short six weeks that we have been in school and acts like a big brother and protector of the class. A prime example of his integrity and leadership is exemplified in this story about what happened one day at recess. Jamir's class had lost five minutes of recess. His teacher was late because she was dealing with a minor emergency and when a substitute teacher picked up the class, the class had a choice. Tell the substitute they owed five minutes or pretend like they forgot and go play right away. Jamir's teacher came a few minutes later to relieve the sub and to her surprise, when she arrived outside, she found all but one student already on the wall finishing their five minutes. When she asked the students who had helped remind them about their consequence, they confirmed what she had already guessed. That Jamir was one of the students who had guided them to choose honesty and integrity over short-lived fun. He's been nominated for the weekly class Student of the Week many times and I think his classmates said it best when they said, um, "He's a good teacher's assistant and gets his work done. He helps me focus and he was kind to me and included me in a lot of things." For these reasons and many more, Jamir is Student of the Month.
Hey, Jamir. And Natalie. I hope he doesn't mind me saying this, though. Um, Jamir has not always been the stellar student that Ms. Hopkins talked about. And so, when he and I found out that he was chosen as Student of the Month, I pretended to have so much surprise and he was like, "Um, Miss, I told you I'm gonna be good this year." So, he's doing it and I'm so proud of him. Good job. So, um, each month, we recognize one staff member of the month to celebrate the extraordinary work that our educators do for our students and our school that stands out from their peers. But this month, I had a really hard time choosing just one. The past several weeks have brought many challenges to MES, like staffing classrooms, mentoring and welcoming new teachers, and filling in gaps while I was out ill. But through it all, every single staff member has stepped up with positivity, flexibility, and unwavering commitment to our students. It has truly been all hands on deck at MES. From every grade level, every department, and every role, our staff has gone above and beyond to ensure that every child feels safe, valued, and loved, and supported while continuing to grow and learn and not missing a beat. Their dedication and teamwork have made me so proud to be a part of this school family. So this month, instead of honoring just one person, I wanna shine the spotlight on our entire staff. Please join me in thanking them for all that they do each and every day for all of our students. Principal Jones at Wilkinson Middle School.
Good evening. Good evening. I am here to present the Heart of Madison Awards to two of our Wilkinson Wildcats, um, Masato LaPointe and Jaden Rose. If they can come up. So Masato is our new sixth grade student. Um, and his math teacher, Ms. Lianis, says that he's funny and that he's kind. She was most impressed with his ability to make her laugh each and every day for the class, but that he constantly surrounds himself, surrounds himself with great people and he is a great asset to the classroom. He's very knowledgeable. He's always helping others and we just want to present you today, Masato, with the Heart of Madison Award. I don't see our other sixth grade student, um, Jaden Rose, but he too is a superstar in our building. He is new. Both him and Masato are new to our building. They are our bright and shining sixth graders and we're just really, really excited to have them. All of the things that they, their, their future is just extremely bright. We are very impressed with our sixth grade class. Heart of Madison Award for this month for our staff member. So this month, um, is, is a special month with it being the Heart of Madison. Um, and one, the staff member that was chosen, um, is just, I don't know. She, she does everything for our building. It's Ms. Lauren Schultz. Ms. Lauren Schultz, won't you come up? So Laura is a, um, she's not new to our district. So she was with us a long time and then she left to be a fabulous mom for several years and then she returned to us. She's our special education, um, extraordinary in our building. Um, I meet with Laura every morning. Either I'm calling her on the way to work, like, "Laura, we gotta do this. Laura, we gotta do this." But the things that she's brought to the building, um, she goes out and she researches these things. She got us a sturgeon, um, last year. So we had an endangered species animal in our building and So we had an endangered species animal in our building, and we're gonna get another one this year. But just the different things that she does, the environmental projects, the restoration projects, you name it, creative to no end. She spends her weekends coming into the building to just, like, paint a wall or to redo this. If there's a kid in need, she has the heart of Madison and just a perfect human. So we're very, very happy to have her. I heard that. We're very, very happy to have her and present her with the Madison Award today. Thank you. Thank you all.
Last but not least, Madison High School.
Evening. Mrs. Colley here, Ms. Halchowski. We are here to present on behalf of our staff our 12th graders who have been nominated for our Heart of Madison Award. If we could please have Inam up first. Come on up, Inam.
So all of your teachers have said you are such an amazing student. You show determination and dedication, clear in your work ethic. Even if one question is wrong, she will work to correct it. And it is an absolute joy to have her as a student. She goes above and beyond when it comes to achieving and succeeding in class every day. Her work ethic and commitment to learning are on par.
Evening. Inam is a student who transferred to us with English as a second language. And she has worked very hard to get herself on par and even surpass her classmates. She has worked to be in the top 5% of her senior class. She also has an amazing work ethic, which has helped her to acclimate as well to her new environment. We are grateful to have Inam as an Eagle. And you're welcome. Inam is a great student. She's driven in a way that is rare to see in teenagers. I have only known her since the beginning of this year, but it seems like she's come a very long way, and I'm so glad to have her in my class this year. And lastly, Inam is motivated and driven. She wants to succeed at everything. She is willing to jump in and step out of her comfort zone, a great part of her personality, and see who she is. Congratulations, Inam.
Our other student, Ender, was not able to make it tonight. But he has been a part of our robotics program from its inception. He always works well with his peers, and he's currently learning how to build an upgraded drivetrain for our first robot. So more to come as the competitions will come in November. Ender always shows kindness, leadership, and a strong academic work ethic. He's creative and funny and an amazing student to be around.
Ender is a dedicated student who puts great care into his work. He takes all of his classes seriously, and that is reflected in the quality of what he turns in. We feel lucky to have him as an Eagle. And lastly, Ender is an amazing individual. He has a lot of knowledge and ambition. Love working with him every year.
And then for our Eagle staff member for the Heart of Madison Award, Ms. Teresa. Teresa is very dedicated to and cares so much about our district, our building, our staff, and especially our students. She always puts our Eagles first. Whatever the after-school activity, be it athletics clubs, tutoring, she always supports our students and helps however she is needed. We are incredibly lucky to have her on our Eagle staff team. She is so dedicated and friendly. You can always count on her to greet you in the hall and show you pics of her grandkids, of course. She's an integral part of our Madison family. She is kind and calm here in our team, always willing to help out, well-liked, and the place would not be the same without her. She always has a kind word to say to everyone and greets everyone with a smile every day. She is so kind and sweet. We love sharing pictures together. She's always willing to help out with anything extra as well. She is a pure breath of fresh air to work with.
All right. Teresa is a very hard-working person. Every day, she comes in and gets right to work. She takes pride in her work and is always willing to go above and beyond. Teresa is amazing, always willing and has a smile on her face. She is a pleasure to speak with and is caring about our school community. I hate that I am often here late enough to chat with Teresa, but I'm also lucky enough to get to talk with her often. She is one of the kindest and warmest people in the building. And lastly, Teresa is a wonderful person to chat with at the end of the day. When I'm working late, I appreciate her so much. Congratulations, Teresa.
We are gonna take a five-minute break. Everyone is welcome to stay, but if they need to leave now, we'll give you five minutes, and then we will get back to our agenda. Congratulations to everyone.
Okay, we are back in. It is 7:32, and the first thing on the agenda is the administrative report.
We have a presentation from Wilkinson Middle School.
Turn the whole thing. There you go.
There's a speaker for you to navigate the presentation.
Thank you. This is multitasking. I'm glad everyone left. I had to type up what my name was because I'm not good at public speaking. But I was introduced earlier by Mrs. Jones. My name is Laura Schultz. I was in the district in 2001. Taught here to the early teens, had my two kids, and saw an opening at Wilkinson and decided to give it a try again. And I've been a special education teacher with them since March of '23, I guess it was now. And I thought that maybe it was a good time to have some positive news because the world seems to throw us a lot of negatives. So we just wanted to share with you what we'd been doing in the building the last year or so and how nice it's been looking. And we encourage you to come and visit at some point in your freedom, free time. This is just a little presentation of the genesis of the whole project, that our schools face a lot of problems in the world today. Reading for enjoyment is statistically down 40% over the last decade. Equity and access to books is significant. We don't know. Data points to lower-income students having access to one book per 300 children, whereas upper-middle-income students are 13 books per child. So it's significantly different. Reading has been proven to improve test scores, which is important to us as a school. But at our core as educators, our job is not to get students to just pass tests. It is to inspire them to become lifelong learners and successful global citizens. Reading has been proven to reduce anxiety, improve overall health per census information. Reading opens pathways to new ideas, to stay current on world events, and helps people find their place in the world. The readers we face in the classroom today are not the same students from 15, 10, or even five years ago. Our materials need to reflect that. Students want to see themselves in a story, looking for the same color, religion, and family dynamics. They want to see the struggles they are going through, the relationships, school, pandemic, and how that has changed so many things in their lives. They want to see characters who do things relevant to them, like play video games, sports, and text with friends. Content and genres have emerged that appeal to the generation of today, and we owe them the opportunity to access these books safely, regularly, and on their own terms. If they don't want to do it, they're not going to do it. And finding the right material is essential to guide an adolescent to choose to read purely for the sense of enjoyment. So in front of me today, I brought some examples of some of the new materials we've been introducing. We have books written in verse. We have a book that relates to school violence and books of diverse characters.
So well, the slide in front of you now shows how our library looked when we inherited it. The plaques in the building let us know that this will be the 50th graduating class of Wilkinson. So we're very proud of that. One of the things that we... We are looking at our students. We're seeing them. Once we got in there, as you see, everything was outdated. A lot of things were from the '60s. Some of the titles that were there were not good. The political maps were just totally obsolete. And we wanted to revitalize our media center, as we're now calling it, to reflect our student body and the things that we're doing and how our world has changed. This is some of the things that you saw that were just posted, the art on the wall, the different things, the kind of careers. As we know, back then, it was, you know, you read only books about careers in computers. Now our students are actually living and doing their everyday work with computers. Our presidents have changed. And, you know, the book, Can a Woman Be Something Great? And now we know that women are leading and doing great things. So they were very unappealing to our student body. And so we sought to change that. Our big thing was done by our teachers. They came in on Saturdays. They filled their breaks, and they hand-cleaned everything out. We had flags, as you can see in the pictures. Shelby Corey, Anthony Pupper, Laura Schultz, they recycled, they cleaned. They did... I mean, you name it, they did it. Our custodial staff, Mr. Butcher and Ms. Stoffer, they painted the walls, removed the broken furniture. And we did all this over the break in February of 2025. We started there. That's okay. Laura?
So show us some of the examples of the improvements that would not have been happening other than just the grassroots movement of our staff and people around us who donated their time, money, and materials. And they're gonna see some slideshows of the different sources where we received money. We got money from our restaurant supporters. And these are some of the restaurants that supported us with donation. All in Madison Heights. Mm-hmm. We opened a Scholastic Book Fair that we hadn't entertained in quite some time. We had a fall and a spring fair, and that earned us quite a bit of money and rewards to purchase items for students there. We went to a book distribution from First Book, and some of the staff members attended that. We were given 100 books per person, and then a $500 grant was rewarded to shop online. I reached out to my community members. I live nearby. I shared an Amazon wishlist with strangers, and these were the type of deliveries that were at my home. When I got home, that's my porch. So those are some of the things that came to me. And in the middle, you can see I've been racking them and saving them to put into the new room. Making Spirits Bright has been another supporter. They gave us over 1,500 books that were given out to students to take three new books home to keep. They also visited us this fall, and they distributed five books per person to keep, as well as a mini backpack. So the students really enjoyed that event. So the students really enjoyed that event. These are some of our Donors Choose furniture that we received through Donors Choose. Myself and Mrs. Codon, we got almost $2,000 in materials and furniture.
What's going on? Retail shop, and they gifted us our funds to purchase things from them that were our students. So it really looks just, she got a couch for one corner, I got a couch for another corner, and the kids are just dying to get in there all the time.
So one of the great things that have come from this is Mrs. Codon has worked really hard with her students, labeling, alphabetizing, scanning. We've had over 2,000 books go back into the room. Some of them we had before, but most of them are brand new. And with their partnership, those students will work in the library by returning the books, making sure that they're scanned in, alphabetizing, and doing some light housekeeping, and giving them some real-life work experience. And I have to give a shout out to some of the volunteers. My neighbor has been really elated to help out, and she spent the weekend decorating for the holidays and for Hispanic Heritage Month. So these are just some of the books that she donated with my cat. And you can see, her husband also hung all the flags for us in a way that they won't get us dirty. And this is some of the stuff that we did for the October celebrations. So we're just trying to make it an inviting space that kids want to be in and feel good about themselves and make some personal choices on what they want to read. This was just what we mentioned before about the Metro Partnership. Mrs. Codon and her students are going to be instrumental in keeping it uprunning, since we do not have staff to necessarily be the librarian. And I think that's it.
I think that's it. So as you can see, you guys used to meet in our library. I hope you can see the changes. We encourage you to come by and visit. We would love to show you firsthand the work that we're doing and send partners our way. We are looking forward to really reintroducing a love of reading with all these new things to our students. Thank you for your time.
Before you go, I know I want to say thank you, but I suspect that the old Wilkinson librarian would like to say something.
Ms. Thompson, thank you.
This library looks wonderful now. I retired and came back like 20 years later and couldn't believe how it'd been gutted. I just was so disappointed that it didn't look like a media center anymore, and this looks like a media center. Thank you so much. Library used to be automated also. I did inventory every single year. All I had to do was wand every book. Oh, it was wonderful.
Well, we would love to talk with you, yes. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you all.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Trustee Chambliss?
I actually got a little sneak peek. I think it was last week, we were picking up dresses. One of the staff members at Wilkinson was donating to some of the girls to go to homecoming at the high school. And so Colton, who's a senior here now, but went through Wilkinson all three years. We got to take a little sneak peek in there. That is incredible. That is amazing. The couches, everything looks so warm and friendly. It's so different than what it was, and it's just phenomenal. And it's just a beautiful space. You guys did such an amazing thing. So thank you.
It's been led by Laura, and she wanted this project. It was one of the things that I wanted to see, definitely. And we talked, and she just ran with it, and I couldn't be more happier. Thank you.
Back to you, Superintendent Perry. That's it. Okay. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and become the first item of business under the Board of Education action items portion of the agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of minutes of the Board of Education for the regular meeting, September 22nd, 2025, approval of September 2025 expenditures in the amount of $1,203,154.10. Approval of the personnel report submitted by Human Resources on October 1st, 2025. I need a maker and support, please.
Madam President?
Trustee Mary Harp.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Trustee Thompson. Discussion. Un- roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Discussion. Second reading of the policy updates, 1130, 1240, 2210, 2264, 2266, 2412, 2414, 3110, 3120.8, 3362.01, 44110, 4162, 5200, 5335, 6100, 6110, 6111, 6112, 6114, 8210, 8400, 8462. The Board of Education will consider the adoption of the following policies as part of the district's ongoing review and alignment with current laws, regulations, and best practice. These policies were presented for the first reading at the September 22nd Board of Education meeting, and the second read occurred at today's meeting. Adoption of these policies will ensure compliance with state and federal requirements, clarify district procedures, and provide consistent guidance for staff, student, and families. And it is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the policies read as presented. I need a maker and support, please. Wanted me to read it now? Got it. So, do we have any discussion on these? If not, she said later. We're going to vote on it. All good. Okay, we're going to move on. RFP for financial year 26 auditors.
So, Ms. Thompson has provided a folder to you guys. And if you guys go open your folder, and all the documents on the left side, those are the ones we're going to talk about. And she's going to start with... We know we have some new board members, so before we talk about moving forward with the audit, we want to explain what has happened in the past 10 years. So can you pull up the document that says Madison District Audit Findings? It's a two... ...side your purple folder.
Okay, good evening. So this right here just discusses the Madison District Audit Findings, starting from year 2010 up until current. As of now, we're still in fiscal year 25 audit. But it has up until 2024. And it has the year in the left side. The second column is the audit firm that was used. The next column is the finding summary. And then the last column is the finding types. And if you go to the next page, it gives you the definition of each of the finding types. Material weakness on the second page. That's the most serious flaw in a district's financial controls. Next, there's significant deficiency. It's less severe, but it's still sort of material weakness. Then a noncompliance, which means a district did not follow a rule, law, or accounting standard. And then on the bottom has a highlight and trends, and it kind of gives a summary of, for example, 2010 to 2016. Early audits revealed recurring problems. And then if you look on 2024, the district achieved its first fully clean audit in over a decade. So it has been improvement over the years in Madison's history of audits. So going back to the first page, if you look at the different audit firms, we've used several within the past 14 years. One, two, three, four, five, six, six different firms. And so for this fiscal year and last fiscal year, we've used Yo and Yo. And as previously mentioned, in 2024, we had a clean audit, and then we're still in our audit for fiscal year '25. And hopefully, we'll have that wrapped up in a couple of weeks. So if you want to review this, you can kind of get an idea of the audit history for Madison. So, moving on, I create a proposal request for independent audit firms. And I also created a timeline, so this is the first, it's like two or three pages, proposal request for independent auditing services. So this is what I created that I'm going to send out to some auditing firms. But it won't be until after our audit is complete. Because on this proposal request, I have to put in our final expenditures for fiscal year '25, and we don't have that number yet because the audit still isn't complete. So once that...
It's required?
Yes. And then also, I created a timeline where I wanted to proceed with contacting firms. So I want to send it out in November after our audit is completed. And then we'll give them like four weeks for the firms to reply based on the proposal requirements. And then we'll bring back the proposals December 8th. This is all an estimate. And then we can determine the best firm for us based on the requirements. And then if you look on the last set, it's a two-pager. These are a list of firms that I would like to submit the audit proposal to. These, I picked these firms based on, one, their location. They're all located in Oakland County or serviced the Oakland County School District. And then also, they all work with smaller districts. And so it's about six, six different firms, including Yo and Yo, that I would like to send out this proposal to.
Questions? The only concern I have is I did a little bit of investigating, very, not officially, to just see because we were asked when we should be doing the audits. And I was told October. So when are we expecting that our audit will be completely finished?
October this month, in a couple of weeks.
But we won't present... We have been, we have our audit... ...occur in November at the first board meeting?
Right.
So once the presentation occur, or once the audit is done, then we can submit the numbers, put the numbers where they need to go for expenditures. And most firms have proposals ready to go out. It's just a matter of us contacting them. So we'll send this out. We'll have proposals back by December 1st, so we can have it at the December 8th board meeting.
Just concerned that it's going to be late. Everybody else is fine? Thank you.
That what will be late?
That...
The audit or the proposals?
The proposals.
No, I think it would be just fine.
Because, all right, because, you know, we were told before, everybody's already booked.
So that's when we were talking about something else.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, our facility manager is out sick today. However, I do have quotes for the snow removal that you guys can look at, and maybe we can have a further conversation about it. Because I really can't answer a lot, but I'll try to do my best. So what you have on the right side of your folder are quotes for snow removal at Madison Early Childhood Center and at Wilkinson Middle School. And I'll just refresh or bring everyone up to speed. Last February, we lost an outside grounds person. And instead of replacing the individual, we decided that we were just going to outsource. We have an agreement with the union, outsource snow removal, because that's kind of like what that individual did. So in February of 2025, we reached out for quotes in the middle of the winter season, and we decided to outsource. And how snow removal works is you either pay per push, or you pay for the entire season. So what we have, we have only two buildings. So one of the struggles that we have is when you reach out to these commercial companies, taking a smaller business is sometimes harder. And also, we had to make sure that we reach out to individuals that can have the snow clear by 7:00 a.m. So for example, we have to be just number one on the priority list for these companies as a school district, because you wanted to have it clear. So when African students come in, the buildings are ready to go. So what you have are three different companies. We have companies present fun proposals based off of pushes and based off of just unlimited for the season. I'll give you guys a minute to review.
Question for you.
Trustee Mary Harp.
I'll try my best to answer, so.
So, I mean, they look pretty good, but how many... Okay, so a push would mean one clearing of the parking lot, I assume. So I noticed one company has unlimited pushes, but how often, over the past, since you've been here, have these schools needed to be cleared parking lots more than once in a day?
So last year, I don't know the number of pushes. However, I do have an amount. Last year, we spent about $1,800 at ECC and WMS for, from February until... So if you think about last winter, we didn't really get that much snow. So it was a benefit of us to not do an unlimited amount and just do per push. So it depends, because we can't really predict the weather. I do have a weather call tomorrow with the leaders, all the superintendents of Oakland County, to kind of give us and like a weather expert that's going to give us like an overview of what they are expecting. But until we can see what the forecast is predicted to be, official. Like if we get this on the call tomorrow and they say, oh, we're going to have 10 snowstorms, then we may want to consider unlimited.
Right. Because I was just looking at expert lawn and snow. I'm like, that's really expensive. But if we're in these things where, you know, it's two or three times a day, and the regulars are coming out to clean, that would weigh out. But if it's like, no, we usually have it cleared in the morning, but because we have staff parked and yada, 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 it's hard to clean, then that obviously... So it's just in my head, for my own. But, I mean, I guess we're not predicting the weather, so that's...
I can take your questions that you have, and I can put them in my update on Friday.
Okay, I would like that. Thank you.
So your question is, how many pushes did we have?
Yeah, like, let's say over the past five years, what's the average? Are we just doing...
We just started contracting this year.
Okay, okay. All right. So this is all brand new for us. I got you. All right.
But you want to know how many pushes we had from February until the end of the season.
Yeah. Or, you know, or even if you're talking to other school districts, what their average is. Is it just one push a day, or they're averaging two pushes a day? Because I think that helps us.
We had four pushes.
Four? Okay.
That was just in February? In February.
Okay.
Chambliss?
Um, for the one that says the certain amount for like, for, it says for all snowfalls, one... Um, for the one that says the certain amount for like, for, it says for all snowfalls, one per, one push per day. Um, do you know if, let's say it has to be done first thing in the morning so that everybody can get into school safely? But by, you know, one o'clock, we've got, we've accumulated four inches. If we could call and that automatically guarantees they'll come back out and it might cost more, but that they're at least guaranteed to come back out.
Let me check. The contracts are inside.
I'm just getting these. I don't see anything about them coming.
Okay. So, let me read.
Okay, here's one. Says snowfall taps in excess of six inches will require additional charge equal to one push visit. This applies to both per push in the other contract agreements. Salt and icing are dictated by market forces. An excess of 10 inches will require an additional charge equal to two for push visits. So if they come back, you're paying double.
Or if we have 10 inches at once.
That is
I think it's only one per day. If you decide to do unlimited and probably if they have to come back, then it's going to be more.
Yeah, this big lake says if they have to come back for a second time, it's double equals two for push visits.
Nice, yeah. It's going to be double. Um, but I can ask that specific question, company that question.
Trustee Chambles.
I guess my opinion then would probably kind of have to wait just to see how many snowstorms are kind of like guestimating could be coming. Because, I mean, I'd be more concerned with the like big heavy drops. Because we have seen so many times where you drop your kids off in the morning and then by afternoon it's filled up the lot again. So if we do get a big push in the afternoon, that could easily pile up, especially if we have a couple of those. So I guess that would kind of be where my opinion sits.
I can update you guys and my newsletter.
But I appreciate the fact that you've sent the information forward. Thank you. Any else? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Carlos Harp.
I know this is relatively new for us for tracking, but just by chance, is there any other historical data that we have? Like how much we've had clear, how much we've added.
So in the past, when we had more staff, outside grounds managed all the snow. So lost an outside grounds member and to try to money in the budget, we decided to go this way instead of hiring an individual to do.
I know for a long time, I don't know if it changed. There was a lot of overtime that we paid. So there was expense even beyond when our people were doing it. So who knows what that would look like today in today's salary rate? Any else? Trustee Chambles.
I just have a quick question. Do you normally, like every year, have a phone call with a professional weather person to? You do? Okay.
And when we have our snow days, they lead that call as well. It's led by Oakland Schools and all the superintendents get together and they have old meteorologist that studies the weather all year long. Um, he leads the call. As a team. So it's not just me sitting at home watching the news like, oh, I think we're going to call it. We all come together as a group.
Yeah, I just, this is, in all these years, this is the first time you've mentioned a phone call with like a professional weather guest, like estimator. I mean, he's not a guesser, he's a profession, but weather guesser, I don't know what else. Predictor.
Meteorologist.
And I think that's really cool. So, all right, thank you.
And I, sorry, there's a typo for the Wilkinson Middle School, the the per push day, it says $2,058. That should be $4,800 if you look at the contract.
Which company?
This one. Or aggression.
Aggression, snow plowing, it says $2,058. I just looked at the contract, it's $4,800 for the season.
For both buildings?
No, just Wilkinson Middle School.
Just Wilkinson. Okay.
That's what I get for copying and pasting.
Oh, that's why, that's why we'll get an opportunity. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, um, was the board member terms? Go ahead.
So I just wanted to make sure I have all the accurate information and so that you guys know and we know what elections we need to have board members on the ballot. If we can just go through each board member and you tell me when your term is up, I would really appreciate that. So we'll start with Madam President.
My term is up. Not now.
November 28th.
Yep. Well, November is, our term ends December 31st.
So December 2028, your term.
Yes.
Your term.
Our bottom. My term. Um, and Mary, uh, Bush was elected with us. Was elected with us. There was
Kristara was, and then, um,
Kristara, same year.
And then April and Salmo was appointed. And then she re-
Okay, we'll come back to her.
Okay.
So April was in that year as well. Okay, appointed. So we have Thompson and Kimball. You guys are on the same term, right?
Yep. Twenty six.
Guys are up December 26th. And the question at hand is Harps. Do they have, do you guys have to go back on the ballot? I know we had this conversation in the last meeting where if you were appointed, you don't inherit, well, you don't automatically get that person's term. You have to go back on the ballot in a year or two. Is that right? I don't know.
The next, the next election, so both of those seats. Y'all.
So in December of 26th.
Right, but April's seat, who?
Unless it Dodge.
And then who followed Melissa?
Carlos.
Carlos. Carlos. So is Carloses?
No, Mary, no, I followed.
You followed, you followed April. And then you followed Mary Bush.
He followed Mary Bush and I, I
April resigned first.
You followed Dodge. Yes, he followed. Mary Bush.
Yeah, so it was April, then Dodge, and now Harp, Mary Harp.
Yes.
And then it was Mary Bush and then Carlos Harp.
So Mary was on the same rotation as Mark and Gloria. Let's go. For a full four. Your seat. And then Mary.
Hold on, Mary was appointed though. She wasn't elected, so she only serves to the next election.
Which is December 26th.
Same thing with Carlos. So you're going to have, what, five seats open?
Four.
Four?
Thompson, Kimball, Harps.
Mary Bush wasn't appointed. She was a write-in.
She was a write-in, but you don't assume someone's term. Are appointed to the board to the next election.
She was appointed, but then she was a write-in for the next election.
Yeah.
So she was actually
She was elected.
Yeah.
Right.
But I, I just, my concern was there used to be four of us on our cycle. So one of those has to be a two-year seat.
It was four on your cycle, which was Mary Bush. But Someone, Mary Bush wasn't on your
No, Mary Bush ran with, um, Gloria and Mark.
April was on your cycle.
Yes.
Because April, it was someone before April. Remember?
No, she was a write-in, right?
She was elected.
She was a write-in.
She was not a write-in.
She was not a write-in.
No. She filed petitions and ran.
So she basically took over Crystal Beaver's seat.
Yes. So, but April would go to 20. So April was replaced with Dodge and then replaced by Mary Harp. So April would have went to 28, making four on your seat. But because someone was appointed in her position, that individual will go only until the next election, which is 26. So that's why you don't have four in your year. So now it's three, four.
It used to be they just, they had to run, but they had to run for the duration of the seat. So we would have two-year and four-year seats open.
So you, you still do?
How is that, the way you have it now? Who would be a two-year seat? Let me, let me do a little bit more investigating.
Mary and Carlos can run for a two-year seat
You saying?
The next election.
Okay.
But Gloria and I are four-year seats.
Are you saying that Mary Harp would have to run in 2026? But if elected, that would only give her to get back to the original of 2028?
That's what I'm thinking, but I tried to call Oakland Schools today and no one answered. So I could not get any clarity.
It's in our policies.
We, we know the seat, the election cycle is right. We just don't know when the seat is up.
Okay, thank you.
One of them's a four and I believe one of them's a two. Okay, action items. We have approval of the class of 2029 Student Activity Account. In accordance with district policy and accounting procedures, each graduating class requires a designated student activity account to manage fundraising efforts and class-related expenses through their high school years. The creation of the Class of 2029 Student Activity Account will allow this class to raise funds, track expenditures, and plan for class activities such as dances, senior trips, and graduation-related events. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the creation of the Class of 2029 Student Activity Account. I need a maker in support, please.
Madam President?
Trustee Thompson.
I can make a motion that the Board of Education approve the creation of the Class of 2029 Student Activity Account.
Thank you. Support?
All support.
Trustee Mary Harp. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up is the adoption of the board policies that were read earlier. Didn't read through it all. I would like support to adopt. I need a maker in support, please.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambles.
I make a motion that the Board of Education adopts the board policies as recommended.
Support? Trustee Thompson, support, discussion. Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Committee report, GRC was Have a report from there. And Parks and Rec?
Um, the Parks and Rec Committee is working on finalizing the five-year master plan based off the survey results from community members. With having finished the previous five-year master plan two years early. They are working to redo their goal settings for the next year. And that's about it.
Thank you. Uh, HRC?
The HRC is having a fall festival, October 11th at Rosie's Park from 12 to 4:00. So we hope everybody will come and check it out. You can get more information about it on our Facebook page.
Uh, the finance meeting, we did meet. Do you want to give a summary? Trustee Thompson or Superintendent Perry?
Go ahead.
It was very brief. We looked over actually the overage spendings from last year. And talked about looking forward to count day. That's really going to drive where we go from here. Um, that was really kind of simple. I don't remember much more. Okay, um, and we are meeting tomorrow. So enrollment committee? Have any updates? No. Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I, just for count day, um, count day was October 1st. We have 10 days, which goes to October 15th to get our full count. We are at, as of today, 98, 99% of our students have shown up for school. So it is the best beginning that we've had for count day. Um, it's, we literally have a couple of kids at each building that miss like first hour or sixth hour. So it's not even like a full day. It's one hour here, one hour there. Um, our goal is by Friday to be at 100%.
So do we, we have a target number?
Um, so that number, right now we're sitting around 930. I think going to be about, we said maybe about six less than last year.
And, um, the 10, 1050, 10,500, that's
Yep, 1,000, $10,050.
$50, but, right, per pupil. Was that about what we were looking at? Was that part of our, our target number?
I think I proposed 10,008 in my budget. Eight, 1008, yeah.
So we will have approximately 48 extra dollars from the projected.
42 extra dollars. Give or take, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Board comments? Trustee Thompson?
I'd like to congratulate all of the recipients of awards tonight. Um, I want to thank everybody who stayed afterwards. Happy fall. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Chambles?
Um, congratulations to all the students of the month, employees of the month, including our amazing principals, who do so much more above than what you think of when you think of a building principal. They are just incredible. Congrats to the Madison High School football team who week, who's week after week, um, hard work is paying off. And their dedication, not only to the sport, but also keeping their grades up, behaving, and following the code of conduct all athletes must sign. These young men are not only dominating on the field, but in their classes and studies as well. They are becoming the most respectful young men. And I don't think these things get talked about enough. And I just wanted to say, if you walk in the building, they're opening the door for you. They're pulling things out of your hands, trying to carry them for you. If you have a bag, they want to take it for you wherever you're going. Um, they say hello, miss, you know, to all of us as we walk through the halls. They're just an amazing group of young men and their kindness and the way that they They're just an amazing group of young men and their kindness and the way that they speak to adults. And their behavior is just very commendable. Um, great job to the coaches and to these young men. Um, homecoming was this last Saturday. I have never seen so many kids stay the entire dance. And so many of them said that it was the best homecoming in years. So, um, to be honest, many dances, I pick up my children and I say, where is everybody? And they're like, they left halfway through, but it was jam-packed at the end. Kids didn't want to leave. They were having so much fun. So kudos to the staff that put that on. Um, and thank you to everybody watching tonight.
Mary Harp?
Well, congratulations to our students of the month and our staff of the month. And again, our appreciation to the principals who are really, really hard um, to make sure that our students have a really good education. And just a shout out to Wilkinson and all the hard work they did for the library. It looks so nice in there. That is so exciting. Um, and I hope everyone has a great week.
Trustee Carlos Harp.
I love seeing the library. That was so cool. And the, the coolest thing for me was that was such a grassroots effort. Um, honestly, I kind of wish I would have known about that. Like, I would have been more than happy to come on the weekends and help with something. So if there's any more opportunities like that, or if anyone else has initiatives like that, I, I think the board should definitely be aware of it, so we can help too. That was awesome. Thank you.
Uh, congratulations to the students of the month, employees of the month. And if everyone enjoyed the last bit of summer, it's officially over as of today. That's it.
That was a terrible way to end, Mark.
Right.
What a buzzkill.
Thanks, Mark.
So, so I just, uh, I do want to say thank you. And, uh, just to kind of piggyback on, uh, trustee Chambles, I was able to get to the game Friday. I'm not always able to at times. Um, especially as much as I would like, but, um, I've been the last few years attending. And what a difference sitting in the stands with, uh, the kids and the parents and the coaches. And kudos to everyone. Um, just, it was just very nice. And I wasn't on edge and people weren't screaming. So it was just a good time and the team won. And we are now in first place, so it couldn't have been a better night. Uh, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
President Holder?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Kimball, go ahead.
I just did. A motion to adjourn.
All right, trustee Kimball.
You're supposed to say a second.
Trustee Chambles supports.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Let's close it down at 23.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson? Yes, motion pass.
Thank you. Good night. Mr. Harold, are you watching the Tigers?
Hold up, Mark. I'm gonna get your sign.
It was like 3:00. They changed it up really bad.
Thursday.
Other options?
I know.
And then show.
He'll be too. He's actually gonna be starting at ECC soon. Bye. He's, uh, starting at ECC for speech.